Sorry for the delay, uh, 7:1 and I called a regular meeting of the April 2nd or the September 2nd council meeting to order, please rise for the political allegiance.
A bunch of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Party, for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of a war of injustice.
Roll call.
President Dyke.
Present.
President Protem Steffler.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Glasser. Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Do we have any changes or additions to the reasons to tonight's agenda? Being on, um, communications, the Lapeer County EMS report.
Or do we want a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, my bad, my bad. Um, can we have an emotion to approve the agenda as presented?
I think the motion that we approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by President Protem Steffler, um, supported by Councilmember Snyder to approve tonight's agenda as, as, um, presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes with unanimously by all council members present. Uh, communications, the Lapeer County EMS, July 2-2025 report. Anybody have questions on there? Being on consent agenda, regular meeting minutes from August 19th.
Just a few small ones. Um, one, Kim, I noticed we, we, we keep alternating back and forth between village being lowercase and uppercase. Can we just remain consistent, keeping it uppercase is one. Um, two, in the council manager comment section, um, this was much more detailed, covering all the different things that we, we discussed. It's great. Uh, we just left out, um, manager Kerberson's comments about the sale of the wood chipper. It was the only thing that I had in my notes that didn't make it in there. He put in that, uh, he mentioned that, um, we got more than we anticipated. It is expected to get around 10,000. I think you said 13,000 approximately. That was the only comment we left out for that one. And the only other one was on my comment on the third line. Um, and it was before the committee was even formed. I believe it was, uh, what I had said was it was before the bylaws had even been approved. Cause obviously the committee still hasn't been formed yet. Uh, but it's, it was before the.
Bylaws.
Had even been approved.
Okay.
And that was the only corrections that I had.
Anybody else on meeting minutes? Being on, uh, general fund? Major Street Fund, Logal Street Fund, Downtown Development Authority Fund, Sewer Fund, Water Fund, Equipment Fund.
I have a question on the Equipment Fund.
Okay.
Um, the Arrowhead Upfitters, uh, decommissioning, uh, 39 dash four, which, which vehicle was that that we're decommissioning and getting rid of?
The oldest Dodge.
Charger. Okay. So is that the one that's up there? That's what I thought.
It's the black one.
Okay. So that, that's one of them that we were replacing or is that?
It's, at this point, we're not replacing it.
Okay.
It, it's budgeted, but we have not, uh, went out to get bids on it yet.
Do we anticipate doing that soon or we're just as needed?
As, as needed. We'll see how the fleet works going forward. We might do it in the spring, uh, with another Ford Explorer.
Okay.
And, you know, that unit is now on the auction site, so it's already, uh, Brian's last check was over 6,000, so.
Anybody else on Equipment Fund? Payroll Register Report. I'm answer questions on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by, um, Councilmember Feldman, supported by Councilmember Snyder to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes by all council members present. And that now is the time on public comment for any agenda item. Do I have any public comments tonight on any agenda item? And we will move to our regular agenda, special assessment waiver. Ms. Kieser?
Yes. Um, the parsonage, which is at 215 East St. Clair, is owned by First Congregational Church. Um, it was, um, assessed an annual garbage assessment in error. Um, they are not part of our waste management program and they actually, um, have their own individual gar- garbage contract. So I am requesting council waive that special assessment.
Retroactive on the tax charges on that or how does that work?
No, it's, it's due the 14th or the 15th, so.
How, uh, how is it that they ended up being part of the special assessment district when they're, they're not supposed to be? Like, how did?
They were not on the list that gets forwarded every year. So I'm, I'm not sure how that happened because they didn't get assessed last year. So.
This is good. I don't remember this ever happening before. So I was just like.
It has happened before.
It has happened before?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we waive the special assessment in the amount of $177.48 for the address at 215 East St. Clair.
Support.
Motion by President Protem Steffler, supported by Councilmember Snyder to approve the, um, special assessment, um, removal from, um, as stated on the record, that 215 East St. Clair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes by all council members present. Uh, agenda item number two, DPW tractor purchase.
Well, Mr. President, I don't want to steal Brian's thunder, but the memo is pretty detailed. This is here for the second time, this particular tractor. The reason we want to move on it now is there is a $3,500 rebate, uh, still available. So we want to take advantage of that before it expires. And I'll turn it over to Brian for comments.
Sure. So, um, I believe it was back in May or June, I provided three quotes. I only updated the one quote of the tractor that we pretty much want to purchase. Um, they're all significantly the same in price, except, uh, the one that we want has more horsepower. So if you look, there's a 33, a 32 and a 40 horsepower tractor. So we prefer to have the 40 horsepower tractor to run the implements, the mowers and brush hogs and stuff like that. And it did go up about 1,500, uh, with inflation, four to six percent is what they figure. I can answer any questions, yes.
Just, just here where the funding is available in the Equipment Fund, has about $135,000 in it at the moment, uh, and it's able to purchase it outright.
Okay. That, that was my first question. My second question is, um, originally it was going to be a shared tractor. Then there was some drama around that. Um, now we're stating that we're going to, and I think before the, the plan was to sell the old tractor, but now we're going to keep and maintain both tractors and is, and is Waste Water good with that?
Waste Water has, uh, put in writing to me a couple of different times that the Ford tractor with a cab is adequate for their use. Uh, they use it about an hour a week and, uh, they, they have a barn that they actually stored in on their property. So it.
So, so previously were those maintenance costs shared between departments and how will that, or were they paying outright? Let me rephrase the question. Who currently pays the maintenance costs on the old tractor? And if we have two tractors, how will those costs be split between the departments?
The way the tractor should have been maintained is the Equipment Fund would provide the cost for parts or service or, uh, towing, whatever would be needed. And then the equipment is charged off for each hour it's used and paid to the Equipment Fund by whomever is using it. That's the way it will work moving forward. The, uh, new tractor will be whoever uses it. If it's DPW, if it's Waste Water, uh, if it's police, it will get charged through Equipment to them.
Okay. What about the old tractor?
Same thing. Whoever uses it, that charge will be recorded by that division or department and, uh, they will be contributing to Equipment for maintenance.
Last thing I have on the quotes, just so for historical perspective, for those that weren't here in the June meeting, this was discussed in full detail, talked about with council on which was the best tractor for DPW. And, and the three quotes were all perused deeply and this was the tractor we were set to purchase before, um, the, the bump in the road happened. So I, I think that's important to be stated. That's all I've got. So anybody else?
Was the cost included in the 2026 budget?
Yes.
In the bucket and loader forks, right?
Yep. Um, you said forks?
Yeah.
Yes, pallet forks. Correct.
How will the mowing work? Does that come with it or are you using something that pulls?
We have a separate implement already currently.
And that will work with this tractor?
Yes, absolutely. It'll work better because it's more horsepower. The, the nine, the older Ford is only 20, 20 something horse, 23. So we'll be a lot more productive with something newer.
And to, uh, whoever is, um, making the motion about that tire upgrades also. Any other questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Mahindra 1640 with the proposed attachments and weighted rear tires for an amount not to exceed 31,300. That's, that's including the, the weighted rear tires?
We support. Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, motion by Councilmember Snyder, supported by Councilmember Glasser to purchase the, um, tractor, the DPW tractor as stated on the record. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The. Vote passes unanimously by all council members present. Um, Heritage Festival Road Closure. So this is from our DDA Director. We had originally approved road closures for the Heritage Festival. They wanted, um, a slight adjustment or, um, an earlier closure on the West St. Clair side to be 6:30 AM instead of 7:00 AM to allow, um, the volunteers and some of the, um, some of the car show people to be able to park, um, get parked sooner or earlier. So that's the adjustment that they're asking for is, um, to keep the current closures we'd already approved. And they're just requesting for West St. Clair Street from Branch to Main Street to be closed at 6:30 AM instead of 7:00 AM on Saturday, September 20th. Prior road, the prior road closures that have already been approved. Do we have any questions on that?
I'll make the motion that we amend the road closure request to begin at 6:30 AM instead of 7 o'clock AM on Saturday, September 20th, closing West St. Clair from Branch Street to Main Street.
Second. Motion by President, uh, motion by President Protem Steffler, supported by Councilmember Miller to amend the, um, Heritage Festival Road Closure as stated on the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The vote passes on by all council members present, unanimously by all council members present. Homecoming Committee Applications. So we were discussing before the meeting, we have four applications for homecoming committee. We have two of the, um, two of the applicants present tonight. Thank you for being here. Um, but in discussing, in discussing the new bylaws and the applicants, we, prior to the meeting, we had some, uh, roadblocks and we, I think we need to table this until we can clarify, um, clarify, um, the process for appointing a little bit more clearer.
It's really more just logistical concerns than anything. Our, our bylaws require that we, we appoint the four officers first. I really appreciate you two coming.
Well, the applicant, the applicants did have a, uh, a good point. What if they want to be on the committee but don't want to be an officer?
Right. Officers have to come first. Officers have to come first. Officers first and then the officers are allowed to make recommendation to appoint other people, um, and then subject to village council approval, or the village council can fill in those vacancies. But officers have to come first. We have, we have to start with officers. So if you, if you, if you want to be on the committee but not be an officer, your application can still be considered, but we can't, we can't weigh in on it. We shouldn't address it until we staff officer positions first. Like, that really has to be the first of the pecking order. Do you have to have officers?
I can send it to you.
Sure. So that's, I mean, that has to be just kind of the first order of business is, is officers first. And then, and then you can schedule a first meeting and we can have other applicants. It just, it doesn't make sense to put someone on the committee that does not have the officers first. It, it, that's, that's kind of the requirement. So.
So say we had all four here and we all get the creepy officers in there. So when somebody comes to us, do they still go before you to become a member? Would we be able to start planning the upcoming for next year without having more members?
So if you, if you had the officers, that's the minimum requirement. So if you had the officers, yes. You, it, people are allowed to come to you and say they want to join and then, and then you can, you can, uh, review and decide that, you have to make recommendations. It's subject to village council approval. Anybody getting on or off of it is subject to village council approval. In, in the event that you haven't done it, somebody came before us instead, or on our own motion, we can. So ultimately that authority rests with village council. But we want to give the officers the ability to, yes, field applications, decide who would be a good fit, make recommendation to us, just like we do with our other boards as well. So.
Well, cause it's, I mean, we, we did this festival for many, many, many years and now it's the time of, yes.
Agreed, right.
It takes a year and a half.
That, this is exactly why I said at the last meeting, I was shocked we didn't have applications sitting here when, once the bylaws were passed. So I, 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 I want it to happen. I just, we all agreed if we're doing this, we're doing it right. I don't want to start off on the wrong foot by putting committee members with no officers. So you can't really run it and.
We would have had the other two here. We would have known that was the problem.
This is the other problem is that our, our current application that you filled out, which is for, for sitting on the other boards, it lacks a spot on there where you would clarify, uh, if you are seeking an officer position and which one. Uh, I think that would have been easy, more easily resolved tonight if all four of you had shown up and we would let each one of you take the podium for a minute or two and we would directly ask, you know, which officer position are you interested in?
If all four of you are interested in holding position and you guys decide what positions those are, email them to me at my village email account and then they'll, that they'll, we'll streamline getting it put on the next agenda.
Four. Chair, co-chair.
Chair, treasurer, secretary.
Exactly. That's the bare minimum.
Did you have any other questions, Paul?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you guys for attending tonight. Much appreciated. Does council have any other questions on this? Kim?
I just wanted to make a comment. The bylaws are on our website on documents on demand too, but I can print you out a copy. Okay.
But thank you for reapplying. Appreciate it.
Anybody else in council have any questions?
My only other question was there is a mention of, um, an application was received before bylaws were finalized. Uh, did we reach out to that person to let them know? To submit, resubmit or they're still?
Oh, I can, I can make contact with them.
Okay.
Anybody else in council? Okay, we will table that until. Um, homecoming or that we would, um, now is the time on public comment for any non-agenda item. Do I have any public comments tonight on any non-agenda item? Open discussion, ORV ordinance.
Mr. President, I will start out by saying the chief plans to be at the next meeting because that's when you will vote on this. Of course, available to answer any questions in the meantime, but the, uh, he plans to be at the meeting. He'll have an update on the status of the township's position and their vote, which is coming up between our two meetings. And he'll be able to comment as well on the county's ORV ordinance, which I believe this very much emulates. So just wanted to give you that background.
Question. When you said at our next meeting, we would vote on this, what?
Typically you discuss at one and vote at the next.
Well. Open discussion, one, first reading, second reading.
Whatever.
If we decide to proceed.
We, we currently have no ORV ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct. We follow the state law.
Right.
So, so just for clarification, is Lapeer City doing their own or is it, or is everybody asking to be to verbatim accept the 2014 or 2016 county one that we were supplied?
Clarification. The county has its own and has had its own.
Right.
The township had its own and is now adopting the counties instead. So it stays consistent.
Right.
And the request is that we do the same so that they are all consistent. That's essentially is just saying the county already had one in place. Our, our police chief thinks that it would be good for us to mirror theirs. The township is now also going to mirror the counties and he's requesting that we do the same. My only question is why? If, if we don't have one at all and the counties would take precedence there, we don't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't. Why?
Well, because it says right in the county's ordinance that it is up to, once you are within municipality's boundaries, it's up to the municipality. So we would have to just say that we're going to adopt the counties or we have to adopt our own, which mirrors the counties. By not doing anything, we have, we're saying we're following the state law.
So if we adopt the counties, then the counties takes precedence? Or do we have to adopt one?
Our own ordinance.
Or we have to have our own ordinance that mirrors the counties?
Our own ordinance with whatever we want it to say mirrors that are not. But where, where in here does it?
What the chief is saying is he wants it to mirror, isn't chief asking it to mirror exactly? So there's consistency?
That's what he's providing.
That is his request. Yes. What I'm asking is where in here it states that, that the county's ordinance is not applicable on the municipalities within said county? That's, that's, that's the part that I'm confused by.
Section 2D.
Okay.
City or village? So that was a call to CY.
Well, yeah. I'm confused because they have the ability to.
They do.
But they didn't want to step on anybody's toes.
Yep. So.
Okay.
So what that does is that defaults us to the state.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Cause state says, if you don't have one, you have this one.
So where does this apply if you don't create your own mirroring ordinance? Like as in what purpose does it serve?
Well, it serves in all other areas within the county. So there are, and some don't want to have any.
Right. So any municipality that is not a city or a village within the county.
Mr. President, uh, two things I wanted to bring up. I know that in the last year, the township has waived their ordinance. So I don't know if we need to make a statement in our ordinance that says, at any given time, we'll waive our ordinance. I'm not sure why we would do that, but they have done that once already. Uh, and the only other thing I wanted to bring up was, is there anything, which you guys probably will talk about individually, that you wanted that is not covered in this ordinance as an example of minimum age or something like that?
Well, the minimum age is covered at 16.
You could.
With a driver's license.
You could be more restrictive. I'm just saying, I'm, that was a topic that's been brought up in this chamber more than once since I've been here, is canceling your existing ordinance or putting it on hold and then the age of drivers. So I just wanted to remind everyone that that has been.
Well, the other concern is, I don't know if I want to ban them, but golf carts are, are.
They are being driven.
Are, are being driven like cars on roads by 10-year-old girls with, or by husbands with wives sitting in the back of the golf cart with a baby, not in a baby seat, holding it like this, going, going down the road.
Which by the way, don't, golf carts don't qualify as ORVs in any of.
I'm not saying they do. I'm, I'm not saying they do and I'm not saying to ban them. I'm just saying.
That's.
The, the reason of the ORV is, is for nuisance and safety and the golf carts are probably more unsafe than an ORV, um, the way they're being driven in town right now. And, and under certain circumstances, that's fine, but, um, the way cars come whoop around Washington, the courier with the way the golf carts are driving, I'm just waiting for something to happen someday. So I'm not saying it's got to be part of it, but it's just something, a concern to be raised.
I've been approached, not very often, but once or twice over the years about the village potentially allowing golf carts with special permits or licenses. I think some communities, um, have gone that route. I don't know if that's something that we're necessarily interested in here. Um, but if we're talking about ordinance, it probably should be up for discussion. Um, I would be interested in understanding the differences, what the state law covers versus what this ordinance does. I just don't know those specifics. Like what, what would be changed if we went to this ordinance versus what we have now?
Which is nothing. We have nothing. You mean, or what, what, what we're currently operating under as in the states?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, what are we allowing? What are we not allowing anymore? Like that would be helpful to understand if we're going from one set of regulations to another. Um, I think we should probably have a good understanding of what that is before we would want to vote on anything.
When does that? They, the residents pay a certain amount and then they get so many certain areas that they're allowed to go in and they have rules. They have to have X helmets, yada, yada, brakes, tail lights, insurance, whatever it is. It's a little revenue maker. But I agree too. I almost feel like we need to committee almost, I hate to say it like that, to analyze it more. Cause like a hovercraft is considered ORV. Certain e-bikes with speeds are ORVs considered. So it's like, what do we?
Little toys are being driven all over the.
Right. So it's like, what do we?
Yeah.
The electric ones are getting.
Yes.
Making it really complicated.
Cause I think it's, they're a bigger, broader.
That is a rapidly changing space.
And that, those are probably a bit of something from the ORVs.
Exactly.
Well, but that's the question is what, once it reaches certain capacities, it's becoming an ORV, which makes it more difficult for us to regulate. Um, quick question, Dale, when you had mentioned, um, the, the township waiving their ordinance previously, or is that referring to when they have their, the, um, that ORV event that they've had now twice? Is that what you're referring to when they waived it? Because they waived it to allow them to have that essentially? Okay.
And they waive it and they then come into town to have the event as part of the process. So again, that's, all these things have come up since in the last year.
We have been asked at, and it's come up at our joint subcommittee before as well, doing exactly this. And we were, we were, I believe, provided materials from a different municipality, another local municipality that just passed this, but they included golf carts making it legal as well. And we declined to proceed on that particular topic at this.
And we declined to proceed on that particular topic at this time, but.
Well, subcommittee would be, would that be even encompassed?
They were just suggesting that we do it, in, in the, in the guise of it bringing business to the, the downtown district, but I think that's how it came up.
I think that more sits at council level.
Oh, it absolutely does, I'm just saying it.
Right.
It came up, and we were provided some information on another municipality doing it as well.
So, does anybody else on council have any questions or concern tonight?
Just one thing in section seven that we might want to have changed if we do, if we did adopt it, is, section seven is giving basic immunity to the road commission county, board of commissioners county. So if we were going to mirror it, you'd want to add ourselves to that list, most likely.
So did I hear that the council would like a comparison between the state law and this proposed?
That was one I was going to ask, if council, if, if council wanted any other comparisons from other municipalities.
That's what I was just going to say, that's why I was bringing up, that somebody gave us, another municipality just did this.
Do you have those?
It was emailed to us, so, yeah, it should be in the email. I believe, I believe our DDA director emailed it to us, to you and to me, at least, at a minimum.
I'll have to take a look at that. Can you forward that to Dale?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be nice to see a few examples of different ordinances, and then, you know, an example of, yeah, Richmond authorizing golf carts, just so we know what's out there and what we.
Check, check Richmond's ordinance.
I think that's, I think that's what got sent to us.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's what got sent to us, so we, we should already have it, we can forward it to Dale.
Okay. Next one.
I mean, because I, what our normal procedure here would normally be is, if we were happy with this concept, we would direct village administration to draft or propose ordinance for us, to then attempt to do a first reading on, but I think it's a little premature on that, because we don't know what we want in our.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, so put it under open discussion.
Open discussion next meeting again, a more, a more comprehensive review. Anybody else on council? That concludes open discussion. Council member, comment manager, curbside, do you have anything to bring to council?
I just wanted to let you know there's been a lot of activity in the industrial park. We are working on a potential sewer line expansion. As you know, we're looking at segregating a piece of property for new DPW building. The current spec building is about to tap the water lines so that it can move towards completion before the weather changes. Lot, lots of activity going on in the industrial park. It's a good thing to see, and, and questions, I'm shooting questions out to the fire chief, and we're, we're definitely have some good activity out in the industrial park. The other thing I want to let you know is, we talked about it, I sent an email to you earlier asking if your computer is up to Windows eleven status. We're in the process of moving forward with getting some pricing on replacing all of the municipal computers that'll be replaced, and we've, we're getting government pricing from Dell, as well as our own IT people, and we have a consultant that's been giving us expert advice in the background, so we're moving closer to getting that project done, well in advance of the Windows eleven takeover. And that's it, of course, I'll answer any questions that you may have. I could talk.
Or treasurer, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
He should be talking about his roads today, he had four roads ground up and.
I was just going to answer about that.
Rolled, and they turned out fantastic.
We pulverized his comments instead of the roads.
Well, it was, you know, I wanted to try it, never kind of done it before, and for a few minutes this morning, I was like, what did I do? And we're scrambling, and, you know, the pulverizing machine just worked phenomenal, but then we had to turn, try to make it into a road. The guy I checked on just before the meeting, he was actually rolling it and compacting it, and then I'll have chloride sprayed on it the next day or two, and, I mean, it's a lot nicer than it was in my eyes, you know, I mean, it was really bumpy, and we're throwing coal patch in it all the time. I may look into having some of this stuff done, like asphalted this year, my, you know, some of the smaller streets that don't have water, sewer issues, we'll, we'll see, I got to give a deal on that. But, yeah, so I hope you guys like it, because I would really like to do more in the future, like, we pulverize a road, and then a year from now, or six months later, then we blacktop it. That's, you're going to get longer longevity out of a road once you pulverize it, so, and the new tractor, it would have been great to have today, I mean, we could have really used it, so.
But it was spec, it was witness that children are riding scooters on the paved, rolled material, so it is turning out very nice.
For pleasure, treasurer, you said you had no comments, thank you. Councilmember Glasser?
I have mine answered.
Councilmember Feldman?
All set.
Councilmember Schneider?
At this time.
President Protem Stebler?
Just a quick update from the park board, I think the main subject of our last meeting was that the board approved a presentation for the tennis court renovations to go to the LaPierre Optimist Club, as well as any other community groups that we can identify that may be interested in assisting with funding for the project. So quotes were obtained, we've got some basic information to present, and hope to have a positive outcome.
Ah, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I drove down School Street, you know, on the way to the meeting tonight, and it really, really improved it tremendously. Be nice, since I'm on the next street, that could get added at some point, it would really be nice, but that's all I have, thank you.
We are adjourned, students, you can come up, get your own agenda signed.
You have to answer five questions about what we talked about tonight.